Hello, welcome to this uh behind the scenes kind of brainstorming. Personal. Podcast uh. Running in parallel to my Know Your Average Bible Studies and also um. I don't know that my deconstructing distortions, I guess, I don't have, I'm not going to speak uh on either. Episode, recent episodes, uh sort of specifically, so um. But it's more or less sort of my own personal kind of alchemy, I guess, it's one of these talks. And it's of course a culmination of both of those. Practices and exercises uh along with uh my own. Work and my own uh reading and progression through Course in Miracles um. And you know, spiritual discernment, all these things that I like to talk about and that uh. I enjoy sharing and that my, of course, my channel is created as a platform to do for myself. All of those things are sort of going to be touched on here in this. Episode today, so thank you for joining me. Um it just for reference is August eleventh, twenty twenty five, nine nineteen. Good time, good numbers for me uh in the morning. And uh I don't know, I'm not numbering these, I guess. It's sort of a side alley session, uh oh no, pun intended. Um but a segue off of um just my podcast, you know. If you've been with me for a while, then you know, uh sort of a podcast to nowhere, lost in. Transition now as I've been, you know, since twenty twenty four. Uh locked out and and kicked out of all that kind of stuff somehow. My Spotify, my me YouTube and things that sort of had, you know. Not saying I had a ton of followers or anything, but I had a lot of work there, you know, and uh and I did have good followers, good audience ship. I hope most people have followed me and found me here. Uh from over there, I'm sure if you like my content enough, you'll find me somehow, which is. Been my uh. My endosys around that. But anyways, if you are new and just finding me, welcome, thanks for checking out my channel um. As I said, this is going to be sort of uh. Talk about spiritual practices, about steady commitment, about. The esoteric ebb and flow that we go through as uh. Spiritual beings, as creators, as um. Really, I love this, children of God are, you know, I never thought in my life that I would ever come around to saying something like that and. Um whether before I would have found it, you know, uh. Too fantastic or or too sarcastic, I don't know, I would have, I would have fallen in some of polarity. Uh it would have been neutral, you know, um. But finding a sort of positivity. Indirectionality in those words and in that image and sort of character, the persona that it asks you to. Hold yourself in and view yourself through when you say that. Um child of God, you know, or son of God uh. I I really appreciate the the grammatical generalities in using the word man and son. As humankind and as the creative. Point of conception from the father and using the father, son and Holy Ghost references um is something. Another thing that uh prior to now. The culmination of things and the exposure points that I've had and sort of the. Way of being able to deruffle feathers and smooth over hard spots. And find a really beautiful smoothness, a really wonderful reflection underneath all of that. Uh the bumps, the scr- the scratches, the. The sharp corners and edges that I thought before, oh, this couldn't be me, oh, it's not for me, oh, it's, you know, made up, it's. Over amplified in this area, you know, the more that I have come back to it. I I saw it in so many other facets, actually, the same workings of the Triad of Creation. In fact, that when I come up to this walk beforehand of even reading the New Testament or getting into more sort of. Uh Christian focused um teachings. I had already had the culmination of the knowledge of the of the Triad of Creation and understanding. I saw mirrored version of the Holy Trinity in it um. Which I thought, wow, I wonder if they people, other people see this, you know. Uh but but now it's uncover uncovering itself and becoming to me what was there all along. You know, and it's not just a similarity, it's not a reflection, it's true vision. And um again, through reading, getting through A Course in Miracles, um I love the terminology in it. Uh it is so. Intellectually focused and scientific and but also straightforward and and. Process function based, you know, um. I find it, you know, really conducive to my own um. You know, settings, my own affinities and and also it's sort of been a really good. Uh gauge for me to get back into studentship, to really step back into like kindergarten level. And come at things anew with fresh eyes, let my inner child really see the material, really lead the way in learning. Um knowing that I do have a strong point of sovereign maturity behind that to. Uh hold the hand, to put the hand on the shoulder, to bring in those um. The role of the observer sort of into that. Internal inner child's really. Um magnified focus, that's what it is, it has a magnified focus of the present moment. And it's a beautiful function, it's um it's imagination, it's it's creation and manifestation. It's really in tune with the like what I call the spirit layer. Um and the mind and the body, you know, everyone has uh. Speaks it more fluently or listens to learn the fluency more honestly. And with less baggage, with less presumptions and assumptions. About what you think you know about the language that's being said already, what you think those words mean that another is saying. Um. And again, when I'm reading it, you know, I'm having this kind of conversation with myself too, not to read it in the way I think I already know what it's saying. But to let the words really be more loosely held and to see the variable translations. Available in it and to read it with fresh eyes as much as I can. Um. With those childlike eyes with, you know, with a sense of intrigue and curiosity and more. Potentialities plausible than, you know, the ratio of plausibility being higher than um having this strict. Rigid um parameters of expectations already set that sort of you you have to maintain structure around. You know, allowing the world to be a mystery still, magical in a sense. But also not to over amplify the fantastical magical sense to where we are allowing ourselves to. Over amplify incorrect creations, which of course I think is something that has happened. And that of course miracles is great and pointing out. But also that it just in the New Testament alone, in the brief. Back and forth conversations that I have already read just through Matthew. Um from Jesus's standpoint, you know, in the Gospels verbatim. It's all this in more compact sense, though, it's this, it's the same exact teachings, you know. And all of that to me is just. A variety of those same exact teachings that I've heard spoken within myself already, the sort of guidance given to me. In the structure and formation of what I like to speak about and teach, learn about and raise my children around and and grow within this the. The morality and ethical laws that I that I saw and thought of, that the spiritual things, I always said I wasn't religious but spiritual. Um and you know, that's another reason why I think um. The science world and the healthcare industry didn't work out for me, although I spent, you know, over ten years. Dedicated to that uh what I thought was healthcare. Uh but also because I was sick and facing a lot of sickness. I want, you know, I I wanted to get out of it and I wanted to heal and when I. Saw time and time again that it was in fact not encouraged healing in in a hospital sense and. In the biological fields and healthcare uh here, at least in America, and the way that it it was being taught and. Taught at the times when I was early two thousands um through, you know, I left it that career in two thousand seventeen, I had had enough. Um. And come to find out, to see the the turns that it took after twenty seventeen. Uh I'm glad I got out when I did. I listened, you know, and it's like that meme I shared on my Telegram channel quite a while ago, um I thought it was epic, I think it was from David Avocado Wolf. Uh but who, I'm not sure who he, you know, he shares memes as well, so and he might not have made it, but he does make quite a few his own, I know that. Uh but uh it was like this uh guy on a cliff. A sort of like wanderer on a cliff and down at the city, oops, as I point to my own room, I hit things, I love it. Um. The city has like the mushroom cloud, nuclear bomb over it or whatever, atomic bomb, I'm sorry, and uh, excuse me. And it's has trust the plan written above it, but the word trust is over the the nomad guy, the wanderer of of the guy away. Uh the hermit and the plan is over the city with the mushroom cloud. Uh and that's it, the tr- trust, and if you listen to that gentle speaking whisper that says. Try this, go here, or even for me, it was an, I I. I don't know, I couldn't hear it, but I was pushed and I think because I was open and I gave up. Wanting to try to direct myself and just that I had enough, I don't even know, I can't even uh. I had such catalytic upheavals in my own life. Um to where I had no place to live, I had children to take care of, I had, I didn't have really a means to provide and it was like, it it was um. Not caused, I felt it was externally caused, of course, little things have brought it on that. Uh my husband and I, you know, were working through and and living through and different circumstances. As my sons argue in the other room. Life is such, right, because when we're in close quarters with others, uh we we test our boundaries and we are but human, right? Um different perspectives, I think, are bestowed for purpose, but uh we get wrapped up in our perspectives sometimes. But anyway, so so we see the external reflections as something so much different than us, we see them as trying to attack us, we see them as happening to us. You know, not what we have called forth from us, not what we have asked for, not what we are co-creating. Right? And it can be much more convenient, especially when things, you know, upheavals happen, these sort of catastrophes, these. Unexpected unfairnesses that um, you know, or punishes punishments that are too harsh and things, which is kind of what I felt like I was being. Living through at those times um. But. Come to find out, you know, come to see how it all played out um those years between uh. Twenty seventeen through up till twenty twenty two. It was tumultuous for me and uh. But then I had a reconciling, I had an, I had an epiphany, I was blessed with puzzle pieces, the the. Uh. Role of the observer, the ha- the higher sight in eagle eyes vi- view of my whole board of where my puzzle was at. And I saw things come together and I saw how external. Circumstances unbeknownst to me were actually divinely graceful, you know, as gracefully as it could happen through. You know, like a stubborn mule, I had had my heels in the ground, tugged away, tugged away. If I had just followed the nice gentle lead, uh you know, the rod and the staff, if I had found comfort in it instead of dissonance. Instead of uh oppositional defiance for some reason. I would have. Uh who know, I you know, I I didn't is the point, but in twenty twenty two-ish, I had a reconcile, I had an understanding of what that meant. Of how that tugging on the lead, that gentle guide and voice that leads the way. Actually has the most highest sight and sees out of all potentialities, the best ones. And is trying to lead you towards those out of the hundred choices, you know, the ninety-nine that you kind of. Think and see and you're drawn to these other ones, it's it's trying to draw you towards that one best, the highest good of all of them. And uh. I know I kind of referred to that ninety-nine, one hundred, most people don't see that in that way, they see it as highlighting the one. And not and 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 stuff, and I'm not really making the shepherd to the sheep, that sort of uh. Value to it, but but anyways, um. I I do know that parable of ours, and it is somewhat relevant to what I'm saying. But in such a different way, here's the converse, here's the flip of the coin, that the different points of view to always look at the same happenings. You know, in every tale, there's the hero's role, but there's also all of those. Side characters and they actually have a starring role in their own life, which we tend to forget when the plot follows a signature character. But the. The walk-ins, the background characters, they all have their own starring role in their life. Um. Anyways, I've sort of gone roundabout, interestingly enough, and I'll tie it together, that was one of my, and I mentioned this in other. Sort of talks about my own spiritual growth and such, but uh that was one of my first sort of awakenings back. Uh maybe for fifteen, sixteen, two thousand fifteen, sixteen um. That great awareness of that everyone is a lead role, starring role in their life. And how all of the background characters that watch the traffic, I'd see people, strangers, people I somewhat know and stuff, and I started. Having more spatial awareness and the fact that I don't know their role, I don't know their walk, I don't know their whole show. And I should never, and I should try not to ever impress upon them that I do know that, that's very unfair, as I wouldn't want anyone at a passing glance. To think they they knew mine. You know, uh and this morning I had a bit of a nice connectivity, a deeper sense and a pole shifting gaze to this ultimate. Different teaching about external people and myself and God and and sort of where. Viewership and observership happens and judgment and. Stepping in and out of these perspective roles, the one person, first person POV of myself, thinking of others as that. Thinking of the ultimate visions, you know, and uh. I used to, you know, sometimes, and lots of people have the saying and and lots of people say this, only God can judge me. Only God knows the whole walk um of my life, there's never been somebody there beha- beside me the whole time. Um except for, you know, God, the great observer, the creator. And. When I had heard this before, I had. The locus of control and the focus of POV in my singular self and the individual. As reality coming forth from me, directive from me, this sort of command ship and the sovereignty at the intellectual level. Very trapped in that uh. Ownership sort of of myself and um. Almost as the record keeper, almost as like the best knower of all the models, of all the potentialities, right, of sort of. Um being the observer, the the data analysis, the one who creates sort of the graph model of all of the happenings and such and see. You know, myself as that, myself as that role of authority and the and the container for that and also. The the judge of the material, right, the one who sets the median, the one who does the calculations and sees where that best highest path could be. I do, I really had set in my s- in in my own self. And then thinking God watches this as I build my best chances and 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 God observes that, you know, um. But in comes the lead, in comes the gentle guidance, the light pole. Uh the mother's hand, you know, I saw this old poem that I remember a long time ago. Yeah, it's so funny time, how time folds on itself, things that I that you write, that are so deep when you write them. Now you come back to them five years later and the depth quality is deeper than you ever knew you were writing it in. Um. But that in came that gentle lead, that guiding hand again to tell me this morning in this sort of, I had a pole shift, I had a. I had a magnet flip happen, that locus of control, the focus. Came not come not from me in inside of my myself, but it's in God. It's in source. And like a magnet, it pulls me towards it and uh. The conduit, the conducive um. Sort of um amplification spot between it, the um the booster, so to speak, you know. Sorry, my my kids are in the background being a little bit loud, so if it translates into um. The podcast, I'm sorry, it's a bit distracting to me myself. Um but the Holy Spirit, especially through um Course in Miracles, I really have been appreciating this dynamic. The teachings of it, you know, it's like a booster, it's an amplification through there, it's a transmitter that translates a bit. Um to help me, us, the human, the the vessel down here, the create, the created. Uh son, the point of conception, the external point of conception outside of us. And again, the birthing and the 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 fact of, just maybe because I'm a mother and I have children and so I have such a great, direct, strong, tangible teaching of. Um what it is to create something and to be separate of you without you, to really get that um. But but yeah, the. All those things tie so deeply in. Um for me now, in such a, in such a grander way. Uh and knowing that that lead, you know, that lead, like I said before, prior to introducing sort of my epiphany that I had today, that. The lead of God sees that highest potentiality and is that gentle nudge towards that best path. But in such a way that doesn't infringe, because all. Free will is available, all potentials, I mean, they should be discerned upon, they should be glanced at, doesn't mean you have to choose them, it doesn't mean you even have to validate them. But glance at them and and account for, accept them for what they are, acknowledge them by name as what they are. Illusions are delusions, not the best, worst case, you know. Correcting correctnesses that you see with that and that, and that that's what bring, you know, brings you to that highest, leads you to that highest best potentiality when we listen. When we don't think and go into it with thinking that we already know those points, that we are the sort of the judge and jury. And we have the ongoing calculations, right, and available to us in our uh mind's eye and our, you know, I like to call it the mental boss, the mind's boss. Um. You know, and that's where for me, I would feel like it's formulated, uh you know, others might. Think of it in a different capacity, but I find that the spirit layer to myself, what I was teaching and will continue to teach in my systems. Uh courses and workbooks I'm still working on, but the internal, the most internal layer, the uh well, it's not most internal because it's also the most external. But the spirit layer, and I think it is the Holy Spirit. You know, I think it's that the residual layer of the Holy Spirit now I see is the architecture and of course. There's connectivity in an internet between all of us and the spirit layer is connected to all our spirit layers because it's one. And it's him uh. But um. For me before, the low, the, like I said, this sort of control was in the mental boss. And the mental boss was sort of telling everybody else the way and uh. Connectivity and openness, listening to try to gauge for myself, excuse me. Um. What that spirit boss could even sound like, that was the open door and then the teachings came through, you know, and that was long before. Uh I had turned a face towards uh Christianity's teachings and and seen, you know, the same verbiage that. I had been given in that more metaphysical sense and like discovery and exploration of energetic exchanges. You know, and of the self as a systematic um mind-body-spirit vessel. That is an electromagnetic plasma uh. Light water body-esque thing, you know, I had all these other pieces from metaphysical science background from um. Lots of different teachings outside of religion that when I came to religion. I saw that they're all, we're not so different, you and I, you know, it's like. Rectifying and and bringing together, you know, the culmination and hence, like I've said, and I sort of got got away with a little earlier, but. Everything kind of come together a couple of years ago for me to really, when all the piece, puzzle pieces came together and. It wasn't of my design, it had nothing to do with my mental boss's coordination, it was a plan outside of any of those tiny, my plans I thought I thought of, in fact. Uh I had the ultimate correction at that time. And and I had a real showing um of external confirmation in my own right, in my life. Of the ultimate best plans, but that was only because I had given up. That control, I had finally said I had enough, I don't, I don't know, you know, I had given up the reins of that mental boss. And it opened up space to try to listen to the others, try to listen to the body, I did the body first um. Honestly, and I will teach that again in that way um. I find it, I find it the best approach, especially because most of us like myself have had disassociated. Uh choking out of both structurings uh by sort of this archonic matrix overlay of the systematic um. Enslavement that we're all a part of. So um I find that going from mental to physical first really gives us the physical space needed and the. Physical muscle needed to actually see and feel space and flexibility, then the spirit will come forth. Because even if we we know the mentalness of needing to connect to spirit or being cut off from it, wanting truths and all these things um. If we allow the mental to still hold a a vice grip on the body as if it's the main controller. We're sort of still nodding to the fact that that it's not in equal ratio three, three and three. That that my mental is still has a greater ratio and power and state of dominion over uh all. And so that sort of negates the ability for any. For camaraderie, for communion between all. And in fact, when you get a space of generalities, communion, you find out that the perfect third ratio, in fact, is infinite for a reason, that it's a repetitive threes for a reason. Uh because there's there's void space between the whole that is uh unmeasurable. Numbers can't touch it. Numbers can only reflect down, it create a manifestation of solid of solid formation. To represent that space, but that space is always there. Um and you can see it quite visually when we when we dissect that thirds and we draw a pie graph and we have it in thirds. There's a line there, there's a boundary. Um maybe a hole if there wasn't, what is, you know, um. And sometimes people think, oh, because they're three separate things, they never touch because they are, they their separateness in themselves, their diversity keeps them. From touching, so to speak, keeps them separate from each other. But no, it's the agreeance, because they're one whole, they're one of one whole, they're of a whole encirclement, they're of the same making. If they weren't, it'd be one, one and one, it'd be three things, it wouldn't be enjoined into a pie like that. They're encrusted in the crust, they're baked altogether, you know, it's just the ratio that creates the separateness of the fact that they're a third of a thing. And so to respect the wholeness and what's the same, but to. And so to respect the wholeness and what's the same, but to also be able to respect the differentness. Has the calling of this mystery that bo- borderline between all things. And if we can just say that that's God there. That's infinite intelligence that does that, outside our capacity for understanding the what, whose and what's. The functionality of that is not part of the game in here. If we could just respect it, observe it and learn from it and work with it. You know, that's what I've tried to do. And it's opening up so many different ways to see things for me. And in fact, things that are lighter and brighter than the way that I thought was so. As just so before, you know? And you know, it brings in the same thing with the terminology and the words, and I thought things, saying these certain words were just as so. And sometimes people hear their words or their virtue signaled phrases, or they see a girl's. They see the symbol from the Girl Scout badge and they think, oh, they're part of my tribe. But when in fact. That symbol in itself represents many things. You know, but, but just trying to not say that I can't use the symbol now, or that I have to use in a one designated way, but just to create more fluidity around it. I guess that's been my uh. Sort of. Unfolding. Now I've just realized I sort of talked for a half an hour, it's getting a bit long. I think. I was going to bring in sort of my homework, because I had left my Not Your Average Bible Studies. With a bit of homework in chapter nineteen of Matthew. Because Jesus gives his version of sort of the breakdown of the quick commandments, the best to follow and. Uh, you know, the things to live your life by, and of course those. Uh, the, the be attitudes, I think is, you know, I, I realize in my earlier sessions. I call them the beutitudes. I thought there was a word, you know, I, I just mispronounced it, I thought it was something about the word beauty. And there, and to be beautiful, to person, to be a personification of beauty is kind of what I had seen that word. Uh, beautitudes as before, but I'd, I'd never been to church, I never heard that right saying of be attitudes. And I get it again about be, the verb to be and the attitudes and, and the. Other, you know, the inflection of that makes sense just as well, sort of to the one I made up. Or imagined or saw, you know, as my own. Uh, thing. But again, this is sort of. The beauty of co-creation, the beauty of being able to. Think independently in, in this free choice, free will state. Um. You know, distortions, positive and negative sense, we can, we have our sort of own interpretations available and. They are built about upon what we want to see, how we see and, and. What we see within the words, so when we have mispronunciations, when we have miscommunications. Those tell a lot about the intention of listening happening, and I thought, wow, well. The intention of listening and the things that I sought to hear in that at that time are beautiful. Right? Um. But in, in chapter nineteen, we have uh, sort of a, he has taken the old commandments and give them, eh, give them. Them, uh, you know, quick run through here, and I really love that uh, earlier in this chapter as well, when uh. They try to, the Pharisees try to trip him up about all of their. Uh, lawyer loopholes, all of their deviations and extensions, extenuating circumstances. Their clauses that they wanna uh, bullet point in there, A plus, you know, adding uh. Three dot A dot five two, all the way through into all of their laws, into the original ten commandments. And in fact, into the one. Original commandment, which they couldn't even take, so we had to turn it to ten. Here we are with the Pharisees in their five dot two dot twenty seven C. Asking Jesus, trying to ask him about the Moses laws of divorce, right? I really love how. Jesus so plainly kind of says, uh. About an older law, you know, I was trying to like, uh, look at it real quick to see if I could. Um. Oh, here it is, they say unto him, why did Moses then command to give a writing of divorced men and to put her away? He saith unto them. Moses, because of the hardness of your hearts, suffered you to put away your wives. But from the beginning, it was not so. Right? And this is, oh, before, I think it's a little before there. Oh yeah, the Pharisees also came unto him, tempting him and saying unto him. Is it lawful for a man to put away his wife for every cause? And he answered and said unto them, have ye not read that which. Which made them, at the beginning, made them male and female? Right? And it's like, he's asking you, don't you, didn't you remember the oldest laws? Don't you even remember what your old books say? You know, um, before. Man started making an impression on it, what God actually, the original intention was, appearing? You know? Why would we? Put together two like that, you know, if it wasn't so? Um. But the, the harkening back to the ancient laws, to the old things, you know, um, also reminded me of. Uh, and I think I might have said this even in Not Your Average Bible Study, so it won't be too redundant for anyone who's listened to me over there as well. I'm grateful for your listening ears and for spending time on my content, if you've listened to both, I really, really appreciate. Um, your returning. Energy and uh, listening. Now, now I've lost my way in, in giving out gratuities. Silly, oh, Narnia, that's what I was thinking about. In Narnia, in the Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe uh, books, the. Oh, the white witch, she uh, thinks that, you know, she's going to defeat Aslan, she thinks she's gonna kill him, basically. And he, a couple of different times, uh, cites to her, the old magic. And, you know, one time he kind of growls at her when she says, how does he know? How does she know that he will stand with her word, his word given or whatever? And um. Or maybe this is a different time, but I, I might be confusing it because I haven't read these books in just a couple of years. Um, however, I've read them quite a few times because I've read them myself and I read them with my kids. They're great books, if you have never read them. Uh, but anyways, he, he says. Do you think I don't remember the old magic? I was there when it was written. You know, basically he says to her, and she, of course she was not. But interestingly enough. She's been there for quite a while, and for him to say that to her, I love, is interesting in itself. Um. In, in the plot, in the play on words there, but I, I, I'm not gonna get into Narnia dissections. Um. Just, I just like to highlight this sort of ancient magic, these older rules that everything is built upon. And then those who come later with the deviations and think that they're. Um. They're sort of sleights of hand and they're um. Personal. Accentuations ha- are actually go- going to override those most. Basic fundamentals, you know? But if we just stick to the basic fundamentals. And work to eh, explore them as fully as we can, as best as we can, we'd find more than enough lifetime of working, I think. In just that, because uh, I'll sort of, where, I'm gonna close it out. Um. You know, by just saying that, uh, again, this sort of reiteration of the quick. Uh, commandments that Jesus offers in, in nineteen, when um. Behold, some uh, one came and said unto him, good master, what thing shall I do that I may have eternal life? And uh. Jesus said unto him. Thou shalt not do murder, thou shalt not commit adultery, thou shalt not steal, thou shall not bear false witness. Honor thy father and thy mother, and thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. And uh, like I mentioned, you know, those things alone. Uh. Come with grand difficulties, you know, that I think we could spend a lifetime. Uh, working on and through and living in, you know, um. And like he said, if you've done all these things, uh, then now's the time to follow me, you know? And uh, and. One of my favorite things, you know, uh, and I talk about this a lot in my untraditional. Non-traditional um. Bible studies is Jesus the Christ. Jesus of Christ, you know, this Christed gnosis being. That divine connectivity, the listening to the Father, the capability to do just that. And that the Christ being the truth, the truth of that, and that all is created in a perfect sense and. This organic template that, you know, that if we just could actually listen, we would be able to find. Um. And I think by listening and actively practicing those commands. We could, can really, you know, uh. Develop our lives in, in deep ways. Um, do good work, service for ourselves and those around us. And make impressions on our community, on the generations after us. Uh, even, just by doing, you know, direct good work in your own life, just by following those gentle things. Um. And I love how none of those things that he mentioned right there. Uh. You know, were. Things like, oh, go check on other people, go see if they're doing what I said to do, you know? No, he said, let all of those worldly things go and follow me, follow the truth, follow your inner truth and path. Follow that connection, that North Star, and know, just like he's taught his disciples. To go forth each day with nothing. Except the service within you, shoes on your feet and see where it takes you. Do the good work where you're brought to, who you're brought in connection with will need your healing, will need your light, will need your gnosis. Your service, whatever you're there to provide, do it until it's not needed anymore. And then you're known, to, then you'll be know where to go next, you know? And if you're met with rebuking, if you're, if you're met with. Uh, non-agreeance or uh, aggression of any sort, then you don't hold. Aggression, you don't hold anything against them, revenge or hatred, you. Call it for what it is in their incorrect behavior and say that in their ignorance and blindness to. Accept the truth and want to find truth for their own selves, not your specific truth, your, it's truth is not cookie cutter. It's for each of us to recognize and become a partnership, become the Christ themselves, Christed knowledge. Um, to have that inner connectivity, to follow it for themselves, you know? But if they don't want to take up the listening, they don't want to be lit by your flame, so to speak. Then turn your back, shake your shoes and move on, you know? Um, it's not correct for their time and standing just yet. You know, and sometimes. We seem to be faced around us with a lot of uh. Wet wicks, maybe I would say. Uh, you know, where I feel like a, a, a little candle and I see all of these others around me. And. You know, seek to ignite them, but I don't know. You know, they don't ignite, even through the passing of knowledge, they don't ignite. And so this is what this wet wick idea kind of. Um. Image and vision and metaphor, right? Or overly saturated even, sometimes that happens, right, if a wick is, is gets overly saturated, it's. Uh, in oils or something, it's, it doesn't alight. Uh. Perhaps standing, them standing and drying out near our heat, but not catching flame themselves, the heat of the light allows that. Fabric to dry out, to become ready to alight at some point, but we can't, we don't know where they're at, we don't know where. Their dryness or wetness is at in that sense, and that's God's happenings. You know, that's evaporation. That's gnosis of symbiotic water cycles, that's Mother Nature, that's the great. Higher realms of the cycles at work, you know? And uh, and I just think here as created consciousness within the. Show set and setting, as we are as humankind, stewards within the design. You know, I don't, I don't really think that we're meant to get up. Into the scenery, into the lighting up in the ceiling, you know, the actors are meant to be down on the stage doing the role. They're not meant to be climbing up in the rafters, you know, fixing wiring. Or checking to see exactly how the zoom lens works. Or what the sound sounds like from, uh, you know, the mics in the way back, you know, they don't do that work. And in fact, they can't be the star of the show and do that at the same time, doesn't, how are you gonna do that? You know? And again, the respect of what's happening here, the respect of the role and the sentence setting. And to the gn- gnosis of trusting God, that the theater has been designed. With the utmost care, that it was put together with Artesian mastery, that the, every lens crafter. Who made all, every single quote unquote camera that is watching the show, they made them because they love. In their soul to create a camera, to create the mechanics behind it, to look through the lens, to take. Images and capture them, that's, that they love to actually do. And the, the electricians who wired that whole building, well, guess what? They loved electricity so much, they, they, that's what. They die to learn about, you know, the desire, their, their whole motivation is electricity and. Circuitry and making them work well and, um, that's why they did, they do their job. The same thing with the people who made the microphones, the people who, uh, in all the different roles of the creation of what's happening here. They were made from a space of mastery. To make sure the show goes on, to honor and have, be secure in the, in the witnessing and observation of the great show. You know, so tha- that's how I try to see it and try to lean into the faith and the strength in God. And I guess I'll tie it into my final thing, which is my lesson for today, and it goes so well with the theme. In my Saints and Angels, uh, Friday readings that I do. Uh, the theme for this month from Major Arcana and Traditional Tarot is strength. And. Uh, today's Course in Miracles lesson for me, number forty-seven. Is God is the strength in which I trust. God is the strength in which I trust. And uh, and that is, you know, a culmination of what my podcast turned on to be about, what I, what I come on to talk about today. In many different ways and also just my learning. Uh, paths and avenues, different ways I'm seeing different things. Spiritually, in a spiritual sense, uh, energy alchemy and uh. The good work, you know what I like to call the good work? Having an open, transparent heart and soul and mind. And uh, offering love as deeply as I can to myself and shining that out as brightly as I can and as. Translucently as I can to all others around me, knowing that they are reflections of me and seeing. What beauty is reflected in that light shined in them, you know? Trying my hardest not to look at the critiques, not to look at the. Um. Imperfections, but to see the perfections, to see the beauty in everything. And I'll end with Walter Russell, I guess, from, from all that is unlovely. May your vision be immune, for God dwelleth in us. All that God hath to give, he giveth us, he withholdeth nothing. For power is unlimited, right? All power is ours. Because we stand on the electrodes of a universe of energy. We give power by the wayside, it is ours to freely give. And in fact, it radiates from us freely at all times, it's only the capacity restriction that we would even place upon it that could be placed upon it. So why choose that for yourself? Why choose that for others? Ah, it's my wish that we don't, it's my hope that I don't, and then, and then, you know, in the conscious capacity that I can't, I won't, and I don't. But a coming back to every present, present moment reminds me that in the past, I. But a coming back to every present, present moment reminds me that in the past I certainly have. And in the future, I very much might. But when I do find myself doing that, I hope that can step out into the role of the observer, step up and listen to the Holy Spirit, to feel that lead and guiding hand and light to lean into the faith of the rod and the staff and know that if I just pause, take a moment, take a breath, get out of that mental mind frenetic processing parameters and all of the statistics and let it go, press the lunch button and take a, take a break. And let that spirit layer, let that Holy Spirit really show that golden velvet line, that rope, that highest ding ding ding. The lights to each highest potential, I, I will sense it and I can be led to it. And I can, in fact, stand strong enough to make those good choices that lead me that way. Because sometimes the good path is not always the easiest path. In fact, a lot of times it's the harder looking one. But the ease comes in the steady commitment to doing the hard thing, because it doesn't take, it's not one and done, it's, it's over and over again that makes it hard. You know? The easy looks easy because it's simplistic, it looks like one and done, and it looks like an easy to be one and done. But in fact, that always seemed to be a misconception and when we get into it, it seems much larger than we first thought it was. And the one to be done is in fact, ooh, infinite, quite larger than we thought. And now it seems like an unsurpassable one that we can't even step towards. Right? So tricky, tricky to navigate unless we just turn on the light. Stop trying to navigate through the dark, right? So wishing myself luck in these days, wishing you all luck in these days. Uh, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, now of Harry Potter and Dumbledore, he says that at one point. Life is, is very dark, but if we just remember to turn on a light. It's so much easier. So, yeah. Thanks to all uh, fiction and nonfiction, all the impressions, all of the writings and workings that make such deep uh, carvings into my soul and mind, I thank you for bringing me, bringing forth all these things in me. Thanks for listening to everyone out there who is listening to me live, uh, alive and activated. I thank you for your organic intelligence, for your commitment to the good work, for your contribution to our collective. Thanks for witnessing mine, I'll see you next time.